Is Jim ready? Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Maryland City Council meeting Monday, November 13th, 2023, 7:30 PM. Please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Next up, we have roll call. We have everybody present physically except for Councilmember Tillman, who is virtual today, but all council members are here. Next up, we have the approval of the minutes. We have the combined Maryland Council meeting minutes that we went over Wednesday, and then we also have the closed session minutes I'm going to go over now. We held a closed session on Monday, 8th, 2023 at 10:15 PM at City Hall. Motion to hold a closed meeting made by Councilmember Tillman with a second by Fuller. All members of council voted yes. This was to discuss the appointment, employment, and assignment for motion to discipline, motion to compensation, removal, resignation, performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom it has jurisdiction, or any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals, and to consult with council to obtain legal advice. The topics discussed were Maryland Department of Environment Enforcement action, dewatering project credit for CDM, employee sick leave matter for a particular employee. Persons present at closed session where Mayor Miller and all above noted, or all council members noted, City Manager Repriek, Attorney Gallow, Ryan Lubinow, Public Works Director Smeek, and Clerk Callman. Mr. Lubinow left the meeting at 11:00 PM. Actions taken in closed session were consensus to authorize staff to negotiate fine amount with Maryland Department of Environment, dewatering project, no action taken, brief and delay, and project credit implications, employee sick leave. Motion for adjournment was made at 11:40 PM by Tillman, seconded by Cheney, carried by Bob. Is that good for the closed session?
I did not second to go into the closed session. I'll make the change. Yeah, I don't know who it was, but it was me.
Roger that. We'll get that changed. Do we want to do a motion to vote to approve those with the change to the second on the closed session meeting? Anybody who has a motion for that?
Who did second?
Yeah, I'm not familiar with who seconded that meeting. It just says here by Fuller.
I don't remember. I don't remember.
Can we just hold it off for the next?
We'll review it and when the video is ready.
You want me to hold off on approval of these minutes then?
I think so, yes.
So then we will just be looking for a motion to approve the minutes for October 4th, 2023 combined Maryland Council meeting.
So moved.
Looking for a second.
I'll second that.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Carries. Minutes are approved. Introduction of Police Chief Adrian Baker. So last Wednesday, the council voted to appoint Adrian Baker as the police chief for here of Tawnytown, and I invited him out here to answer any questions, comments, or concerns you guys could have, as well as, so you can meet him. Adrian?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's my pleasure to be introduced to you this evening.
Welcome.
Would you like to go over some of your background, everything like that, just so the residents know?
I'd be happy to do that, sir, sure. I began my career and finished it with the Maryland Natural Resources Police, retiring from them after 28 years of service. I was stationed primarily on the eastern shore, and I ended my career as commander of the central region, which includes Carroll County. Upon retirement, I literally retired or left on a Friday, and on a Monday, I was the chief of police in Chestertown, Maryland. I was there for seven years. Chestertown, Maryland is very close in size and population to Tawnytown. I was there for seven years, as I said, until I was contacted by the governor's office and asked if I would return to the Maryland Natural Resources Police as their superintendent. I was very pleased at that invitation. I returned there, and I remained for three and a half years until the governor's term ended, and that was this January 2023.
Appreciate it, and I appreciate you coming to Tawnytown. Does council have any questions, comments, or concerns for Adrian Baker, now Police Chief?
Just a real little quick shot. What am I going to do here? I appreciate this opportunity. I am certainly going to assess the police department, see where we stand. That's going to take a little bit of time. Upon that completion, then I'm going to present a, probably a five-year strategic plan, and that will have goals and objectives, measurable goals and objectives, and I will certainly inform you of those, of those goals and objectives. Immediately, we need to address retention and recruitment, and in doing that, we can do one thing that's free, and that is express our support for the police department. I've been through similar positions, like I say, in Chestertown, and I understand it may seem that the police department is always asking for something. I'll be frank that they are expensive. But if we make the decision to support this police department, and certainly this town deserves a strong and viable police department, it'll be money well spent. The purpose of a police department is to provide value to a community, and I will make sure that we do that in a fiscally responsible manner, so that all our citizens are safe and our property is protected.
Appreciate that.
What are your views towards community policing?
Well, community policing is extremely important. You know, maybe I would answer your question. What does that mean to me? It means that the police should be involved proactively in about everything that they can be. I've said I don't want the first time our officers to meet someone be in a crisis situation. We should be familiar with the activities of the police department. We should work hard on doing the small things. The small things lead to big things, and the more comfortable we can become with all our aspects of our community, the better a relationship will be.
I mean, your involvement.
My involvement is every one of those and more. I intend to, you know, initially, I just need to get around and meet people, including yourselves, so I hope in the very near future I can get a little bit of your time. If it's not convenient in person, then we can do it by phone or something. But again, I intend to, you know, be accessible, to be seen, and to attend community functions, and if I'm requested to be in someplace, I'll do that. I'm going to work hard with our allied agencies. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the Sheriff's Department for assisting the town police recently. I'd like to thank Major Mitchell, who's been acting chief for a year and worked very hard. And, you know, again, the better that I can make those relationships, the better this community will be.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any additional comments, questions, or concerns? Councilmember Tillman, are you all set?
I just would like to welcome Chief Baker to Tawnytown.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I appreciate you coming on board, and there's a lot to get done. I appreciate you being here.
Very good. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Councilmember's statement regarding conflicts of interest on the agenda items. Would anybody like to express a conflict of interest? Hearing none proceeding forward to resolution ordinances and agreements. First up, we have ordinance 09-2023 Backyard Chickens. Is there any additional comments or concerns? We had the new, we had the stuff from the workshop added, I believe, here, and is there any additional comments, questions, or concerns regarding that from council?
I read the revised ordinance. It looks like it covers all the things that we brought up as concerns, so this time I have no interference with the ordinance going forward.
Roger that. Any additional questions, comments, concerns from council? Hearing none, I'm looking for a motion one way or the other on this ordinance.
To introduce.
To introduce, yeah.
So moved.
I'm looking for a second.
I'll second the ordinance, the introduction of the ordinance.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. Carries. Next up, we have the introduction of ordinance 2023-10 Amendment to Officers and Employees Section of the City Code.
Before we even discuss this, I would like some clarification on the reasons behind we have the removal of legal counsel.
So essentially, the attorney sat up here last Wednesday and said that he was going against the code based on the fact that we have always done that.
That's a lie.
To me, that isn't a lie.
It is a lie.
His response was that is the way we've always done it, and it was contrary to the code that we have set out.
That was not contrary to the code, but that's not a reason for firing. Continue.
Actually, I don't see any specific reason that I have to have to fire the attorney and the code of charge.
You think that you can just fire people just because you want to?
I believe that there is a climate and a culture change that needs to happen at this town, and I believe the city attorney was part of that. I'm looking to move in a different direction, one where we are respecting the ordinances there.
You are looking to move in a different direction?
Which direction would that be?
Somebody who has the professionalism to not engage in personal relationships with council members.
And that is what you are accusing our attorney of?
That is what I'm looking for.
Personal relationships with the council members.
What I'm saying, that is what I'm looking for the next attorney. I'm looking for somebody who is going to be professional, somebody who is going to respect the boundaries of their legal obligations, and somebody who's going to put the legal issues of the town first, rather than...
So you're saying he did not do those things?
I'm not saying that. I'm saying that's what I'm looking for for the next attorney.
I don't care what you're looking for. I want to know why, after we had a discussion at the last meeting, where it was brought up that there were some questionable behaviors, and we asked our attorney to investigate and what measures we need to investigate, how you thought it was a good idea to fire him with no real cause.
I have cause. The cause...
And I've asked you what that is.
There isn't cause. I don't need cause to fire the city attorney. Per the charter, I don't. But what I'm saying, though, is that the direction that he had us going in was one in which the city, the city entity itself, did not have to respect the ordinances and code that is put into place.
And that is bull.
It isn't. He sat up.
That is your personal opinion, because I think you don't actually pay attention to what people tell you. Now, I've got a 29-page memo that he sent us with all of the details about all of the questionable behaviors that conveniently revolved around you, and you chose to fire him. I think it's very important that the public realizes the kind of changes that you're making.
Do you want to go into what those are?
I sure would, except for that I probably can't, because they concern other individuals, and we're not supposed to talk about those situations.
I can imagine you don't want to get into it.
So it's very convenient for you.
It is very convenient for me, isn't it?
But we could talk about the fact that you're saying he doesn't follow code.
He doesn't. He sat up here and said he didn't.
No, he said that there are some things that are done like that.
That is actually how he responded to me. I sent him an email, an email asking, hey, this is what our code says. You're not, you're not supposed to be given individual counsel to council members. That is not what our code entails.
No, your Machiavellian tactics don't work. Sorry.
Well, he responded.
You are reading it the way you want to read it. Now, I am going to pull it up exactly. I think I saved it on here. You're, you're, you're... I'll give it to you. Your manipulation is, is out of sight. You have taken it down to a whole new level.
There's presidents for the mayor changing the city attorneys.
Mayor, you must realize how serious this looks, where we were about to begin an investigation on impropriety, and the day before that investigation was to begin, he gets fired. That looks very bad.
He's at the nexus of the impropriety. I mean, here's the thing is that...
You've, you've, the impropriety that you have exhibited since the day you sat, first sat in that chair is immense. There's, there's nothing that's been done right that I can tell.
That's been done right? What hasn't been done right? For instance...
Well, first of all, part of city government involves a mayor and a city council.
And I bring this up that needs a city council.
You've excluded the city council at every turn.
That is not true.
So, so we've had no role or no, no role in city government since May.
You have had the same role in city government as we have.
Each meeting, each meeting since May, since I returned to council, we have had issues come before us a day before or the very night of council that we needed to act on without the proper background. That's improper if nothing, if nothing else.
I'd argue...
You know, you, you can say, well, it's not, the charter doesn't say I can't do that. Well, it can, but common sense does.
That's not what I'm arguing about. We've sent it to you guys. Actually, that's just the meeting in September. We sent it to you, and your response was, oh, we didn't see that email. Actually, one council member responded with, oh, I couldn't open that, so I just totally disregarded it essentially.
You sent one email that had nothing to do with that.
That had nothing to do with what we...
It's neither here nor there. The statement is that we will open an investigation on impropriety and sharing of confidential information on Facebook, and we'll find out who is responsible for that.
And that's perfectly fine.
With or without you. I'm sure you'll cooperate, because you're eager to get to the bottom of it just as much as we are.
And I will, and I'm looking forward to the next attorney taking that on.
But it's very, very...
I'm not waiting that long.
Peculiar that our attorney would be terminated.
Oh, it's not going to happen.
And that was all ready to begin. I don't understand.
Well, I will tell you, I've been looking at the termination of the city attorney since May. I could tell you...
Yeah, that's really interesting, too.
I've expressed that since May.
Since May, an attorney we've had for 20 years...
Who's had nothing but loyalty to this city.
To this city, has gotten us out of any number of litigations, and you hit the door knowing nothing, and you're going to fire him. You've been trying to get rid of him since May, since you sat there.
No, I've been looking, I've been looking into him since May. I was looking into the procedure.
You knew that we had to go in a different direction since the day you sat there.
Since the day I sat down, yes.
And, and that different direction was to fire the attorney?
Yes. I believe he has, he has acted in favor of council members. I do believe that. He has acted in protection of them.
It's a shame you believe that way. It's inaccurate.
I wish, I wish it wasn't accurate.
You are under the impression that everything about Tawnytown is broken. You're going to fix everything, and you're going to fix it by yourself. You know everything.
I don't believe everything in Tawnytown is broken. I believe the city, I believe the city government of Tawnytown is broken, and that's why I ran.
You know, you ran on topics that you made up.
No, the topics I did not make up.
Yeah, you did.
You guys were, actually, one of the topics was that you guys were going to rush the police chief nomination.
We weren't rushing the police chief. A police chief is important to have.
You appointed a police chief without a background investigation being completed.
No, it was stipulated that the background check be finished, but we wanted to complete a process that we had started before.
Before the election.
Coming from the guy who would go to the police house or police station and make promises to them prior to your election.
I don't make promises to anybody. I tell people I will work on things. That's the basis of what I do.
No, I know what you do. I know what you are.
You can say you know what I am all you want.
Let's talk about, let's talk about, let's talk about 719, where it says the elected officials conduct duties, personal manuals, and policies, conduct duties, personal manuals, and policies. Right away, it says the purpose of this section is to define the role of elected officials in the governance of the city. For the purpose of this section, official or officials shall mean the mayor and each individual member of the city council. This code consists of rules and guidelines intended to advance the city's goals, providing efficient and high-quality services to its residents and providing a safe and productive work environment for its employees. I'll just start there. So right now, our entire city staff has got to have the morale of a basement dweller, because you can just fire them willy-nilly, because you're having a bad day. You don't need a reason to fire them. You just don't like what they're doing.
I didn't initiate firings of city personnel, actually. Just so we're aware, I did not initiate firings of city personnel. That was initiated the first day I came into office. Secondly, you can read to me the code and charter that you picked up a month ago. Listen, you've been here eight years, and you didn't know where to find the code and charter, and the...
That's bull.
You didn't know where to find, you knew where to find it?
Yes. I've never needed it, though, because I could depend on our legal counsel and our city manager to tell us which sections were pertinent for the things we were discussing.
And that's your problem, is you should know your city code and charter.
And I do.
I don't believe you do.
You don't. You make it up and just use it how you want.
Okay. So for instance, I'll go back to something that was said last, last Wednesday. It was said that the clerk works solely for the council. That's not true.
It was not said that she works solely for the council. I don't understand how these things get jumbled up in your head, and you just make up these interpretations.
It was said that she doesn't work for the mayor, essentially.
She does not work directly for you.
I'm just telling you what was said the last meeting, which was that the clerk works for the council, only for the council, essentially.
You think everybody works for you. You think you have executive power over every single individual in this city, and that is not the case per the...
Over the employees of the city, per the charter, I can give direct orders to employees of the city.
That's how you read it.
Here's the difference between us, though, is that you believe I answer solely to you. I answer to the residents of Tawnytown first and foremost.
So do we, and you are disregarding those residents by going over our heads and not having these discussions. We also were voted in to represent people.
Present them, then.
That's exactly what we're trying to do. You seem to think that their opinions don't matter.
This is what you believe they're looking for?
Honesty, transparency?
You're not honest. You're not transparent.
Say one time when. One example.
One time when. You actually sat up here two meetings ago and said that the mayor wasn't a member of council.
Nobody said the mayor wasn't a member of council. You don't get to vote on the issues unless there's a tie-up.
Your specifics, your specific statement was the mayor is not a member of council. You said you're not a member of this council is actually what you said to me.
No, you aren't a member of this council, because a council works together, and you've chosen not to do that.
That's your problem, is you weren't making semantics of it. You were actually stating the mayor's not a member of council is what you were telling me.
No, you're not a member of the council, because you refuse to include us in anything.
And then I think in that same meeting you went into about how towns don't have mayors, and I get it, you've had a vendetta against me since day one.
I haven't had a vendetta. I just dislike liars and people who...
Where have I lied?
When you went house to house, telling people about problems that didn't exist, and don't tell me you didn't, because they came to me after the fact and said you did. You went to one house and said, I'm going to take care of this, and then you went to another house and told them something completely different.
What was it?
I'm not going to throw them under the bus. They told me in confidence.
Okay. Well, as much as I want to sit here and pander the ideas that you have, I'm not going to. If you have something else to say on the matter, please say it.
I think it was disgusting and a travesty, and it would be disturbing if we chose to just let you get away with these things without saying something. So that's fine. The public can make those decisions. Maybe they will start to open their eyes and pay attention and see that what you're doing is not ruling for the people. You're trying to rule over the people.
I'm not trying to rule over the people.
I didn't ask for your opinion.
That's fine. I... What I will say is, is if you believe that, censor me. Let the people petition me. If you really believe that I'm not doing the citizens, if I'm not doing the residents' work at Tawnytown, then censor me and let them petition me, by all means. But I will tell you, every day I'm answering phone calls, every day I work for the residents here, every day I'm responding to people. I spend more time, probably in the past six months, than you have in your eight years of responding to residents. That isn't absurd.
It is absurd.
That is more than likely a fact. Not only that, I've spent more time in my six months reading code and charter than you have in your past eight years.
That's because I have a life, and it's your job.
You're right, because it is my job, and it is your job.
But it isn't your job to just interpret it any way you want.
You're right.
And when we try to make changes, you try to supersede the transparency. If we had made that change and had a discussion about why you wanted to fire the city attorney, then it would have been transparent to the citizens. Instead, you went behind everybody's back and did it because you can.
No, what happened is, is that change you're trying to make was in reaction to finding out that I was looking to fire the city attorney.
Maybe it was. When I have other city mayors coming to me saying, do you have any idea what your mayor's doing? And I have to say, nope, sure don't, because nobody tells us. Excuse me?
That I was inquiring about our city attorney? I am allowed to do that.
Yes, you are.
Because that's my thing. That's my thing is I don't, I don't make, I don't make decisions by myself. I take in counsel from everybody around me.
That's a laugh. You've made lots of decisions by yourself without consulting us.
You don't make them with us.
Realistically, I've tried to make decisions with you guys. I haven't heard an argument that has been in the interest of the citizens of Tawnytown in a hot minute.
I'll break that at you.
Well, I have worked on the agenda that I set out that I ran on.
You have a personal agenda, and that is all it is. Yes, it is.
I was a personal. What do I gain?
I, I ask the people who go to do power trips.
Power trips? I don't need to be mayor for these power trips. I don't know why. The only thing that's coming out of you is you want these kind of powers. You're the one who wanted this position. You're the one meeting at people's houses trying to get this position. You're the one who was talking with the previous mayor trying to get this position.
I don't know what you're talking about right now.
I know you don't. Anyways, the, the main point is, is this isn't a power trip for me. This is doing the people's work. This is when they call, I answer. This is when they email me, I answer. I do not get a power trip from this. In reality, I, I go home and I'm like, why do I sit up here and argue with six people every day about stuff that is in the best interest of the residents? Why do I, why do I put myself through that?
Because that's your personal opinion. You have five other people who were supposed to have a say in that, because they are also representing citizens, and you are not allowing that to happen.
And when we put stuff out there for you guys to respond or anything like that, there is nothing.
Again, you keep going back to that. That is crap. You don't give us the details. You don't give us the actual information.
You get the details and you get the information.
No, you give us what you want to give us.
I give you what I'm supposed to give you.
You got angry at him, because he was looking out for the city and decided to give us the information that you weren't.
I was angry at Jim? Or are you talking about the attorney? Legal? I will tell you, I have nothing against Jake Gallow. I'm not angry at him one way or the other. I believe that there is a direction change and a climate and a culture that need to be changed.
It's not your decision to make alone.
Per the charter, it is.
Well, we're going to change that, too, then.
Then change it, but I don't know what to tell you, because I'll petition that to referendum.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Go ahead, Councilmember Tillman.
The code and charter are both actually silent on removal of the attorney. So it's questionable whether you have the immediate authority to be able to do that. And I gather from your reasoning that you believe the city attorney has violated his ethical responsibilities?
That's not the reason for the firing, but...
Then I guess I'm a little...
It's a secret.
...lost on that, then what is your direct reason?
The direct reason for...
He has no reason.
The direct reason for the firing is I want a culture and climate shift at City Hall, and I believe that the culture and climate shift that people are looking for that change was directly influenced by the city attorney, and that is I'm looking to change the culture and climate. Not only that, I'm not, I'm not the only one who believes I have that power.
Sounds like Jay Arthur Court.
Before, before I did it, I asked MNL, research specialists. I asked the city manager. I have asked numerous people, actually mayors of other towns, attorneys of other towns. I've asked plenty of people whether I have this power, the authority to do this.
There we go. Power. There it is.
Well, that's the definition, the power prescribed by charter.
You need to spend more time listening to your council instead of people from other towns.
Well, I'm going to tell you, I ran because there needs to be change here. I ran because there needs to be a change of climate and culture.
I don't understand how you come up with that after living here for, what, maybe five years and never attending a meeting? You didn't show up until you had something to fight against, and you weren't even fighting the real battle. I heard you verbatim repeat to somebody else what we told you when you were standing on the other side. So I guess suddenly it was okay when you said it?
What was it?
You were talking about the Soul annexation. People fought it. You fought it. They're going to build 300 and some houses, and we told you, it's just an annexation. Somebody came up and said that...
And I said it was just an annexation.
No, you said it the other day, when somebody else came up here and stood here and said they're going to build houses, and you said, nope, they can't do it yet. It's just an annexation. That was, that was all that it was. They can't build the houses without the thing.
Here's the difference between the development you're talking about and what an annexation is, and that's what you don't get is the annexation, once you've annexed it into the city, the developers now have the right... the developers now have the right to build on the land. I am against annexation. I will tell you that now.
That's obvious, we already know that.
And that's what I, I don't get what your critique is. That is what I was against with your annexation.
You don't wanna follow the long-term plan for the city. You wanna make your own plan. You wanna change the plan. You wanna have control over that plan.
I wanna plan that best encompasses the residents of Tony Town. And I do believe that the residents of Tony Town-
Remember to tell them that when we have to raise the taxes because we can't pay for all of your little hobbies and all your little fun, fun, you know, throwing money at left and right.
I'm not the one who scheduled us to stay in the loft at MML.
But you had no problem having your wife go and be, pay for all of the, uh, classing too.
First off, I put in for my wife to go to the conference. Thank you.
Can we please devolve away from those sorts of personal arguments?
That's fine. Um, basically, same thing. When the next attorney comes on board or whenever you guys wanna do your investigation, I, I seriously, I do not mind. Do your investigation. And I'm going to say everything that I have encountered here in Tony Town. Everything that I have encountered for each and every citizen council member that I have encountered.
Everything's gonna come out.
That's fine. I have no concern whatsoever on that. And I'm telling you that now.
Well, because, uh, it would take a conscience-
But what I, what I will say is that, I mean, Gyllenhaal's not gonna be here to protect you.
He doesn't have to be here to protect me. I don't need protecting.
Didn't have much to say in October.
Again, what are you talking about?
I don't know.
You say he's not gonna be here to protect us. The only people that remove us are the citizens.
Are the citizens.
At the ballot box. That's who removes us. Thank God you can't.
Okay.
They're all big on.
Well, again, I think, uh, we do have an election coming up in 2025, so we'll see. The vision that the residents of Tony Town wanna go with. But, I think, uh, is there any more discussion regarding this? Um, as far as the actual amendment goes, I'm gonna tell you, the appointment qualification adding their movement power to thirty-four dash three A, the city attorney shall be removed by vote of the city council. I believe that is in conflict with the city charter. And I believe there's legal concerns there.
How would, how would that be in conflict with the charter, sir?
It's in conflict with the appointment powers of the mayor and charter and that department had served at the pleasure of the mayor and charter. It's the same reason that the police chief, removal of the police chief is in conflict with the charter. And this is something I discussed with Attorney Gyllenhaal before he even, before, uh, we terminated him.
Jim, could you explain to him how the code works in relation to the charter?
So, ideally, if, if we were to move forward with this, we would also want to address it in the charter. So that it's, in the charter, there is language, as the mayor mentioned, that speaks to, um, agency heads, department heads being, um, serving at the pleasure of the mayor unless otherwise stated in the charter. And then the charter proceeds to, um, address that for the city manager position, the city clerk and the city treasurer, but not other department heads. So, I think what we need to, what we would need to do would be to clarify how we categorize the city attorney. And maybe we wanna extend it to the city consultant engineer and the city auditor as well while we're opening the, you know, while the patient's on the table, so to speak. But if, if the charter only says something specific about those three departments, then otherwise, the charter says the mayor, they serve at the pleasure of the mayor. So, to make this complete, we would wanna adjust the charter as well to, to match this.
And if, you know, council feels the need to assert power, by all means. That's what you guys feel is necessary, by all means. But I will say, it's, it is something that I will fight because I believe that reactionary ordinance and reactionary code and reactionary charter members are not the way to go.
Your reactionary firing was, though.
It wasn't reactionary firing.
Yes, it was.
It was something over months. And I got an opinion back from MML on Fri- on Friday.
Let's see it.
The opinion, Jim? Did I send you the opinion? From MML? Could you read that?
You forwarded an email to me.
I'll let Jim read it off for you guys. Councilmember Tillman, I read it off for you, right?
You did not read it to me or send it off to me that, that I saw. And, you know, if it's been in the last, it's been the last few days. Mr. Mayor, I have not been, I've been a little busy and not fully up on, on all of the emails that have come through to me. But I did not recall seeing that from you.
But did I read it off to you?
Not that I recall. We, we had a discussion on Saturday, but I don't, you, you weren't reading anything off to me.
Did I read off about the city clerk?
Again, we, we had a discussion, but you weren't, we were not, we didn't have-
I didn't show you the specific ordinance on the city clerk.
I'm sorry, what did you?
I didn't, you, I actually personally gave you my phone to show you the ordinance about where the city clerk was.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
Okay, just making sure.
That was, yes, that was regarding the one, yes. On that particular issue, yes, you did, we did open up on your phone and you did show me that, uh, the, uh, clerk is appointed by the, by the mayor.
And serves at the pleasure of?
Mayor and council.
Okay.
Mayor and council.
Were you able to find that email?
Still looking, sorry.
Okay.
But one of the things at issue, Mr. Mayor, is that, uh, the timing of this, um, does not look good. And while I understand that it has been coming and you have, I, you and I have had discussions about this, we have not had any discussions, um, across council about it. And given that removal is not specifically addressed in code or charter, removal of the attorney, I, I would say that a unilateral action is, um, while not necessarily not legal, um, it certainly isn't, uh, what I would say and that people would say would be in the best interest of town. You are acting in this unilaterally at a time that leads the motives to be suspect.
And you don't, you don't have to-
Regardless, you and I, and, and, and I understand-
You don't have to say whether we talked about this or not. I'm not gonna put you on the spot for that. But, um, you know, we did talk at one point in time where you basically were like, "Yeah, we do need a city attorney." Um, he lives in Florida currently.
He does not live in Florida.
He resides mainly in Florida and travels around in his vacations. And I'm gonna be honest with you for-
He's gonna tell me what he can do in his free time.
What business is that in yours?
For months at a time, we have not had legal opinion for, actually, actually-
You told him he couldn't talk to us.
At the, at the October meeting, he didn't attend the city meeting, which he is required, which he is required by-
That was a planned vacation and just like the city council members who are required to attend the meetings, as long as the, it's-
What does the code say for him? You have, you have it up, look it up right now. What does the code say as far about the city attorney attending, attending meetings? I'll pull it up right now.
Unless, unless, unless excused, an absence is excused by the-
Presiding officer or mayor. Which he was not excused by me. And we had legal issues going on at the time. We had people waiting to get certificates for their daycares. We had legal issues going on while he's gone. You can shake your head all you want. The fact that he'd go away for two, three weeks without-
He's always within reach. He can be reached at any time via email. He doesn't have to sit in your lap and hold your hand to give directives.
Trust me, I'm not the one messaging him constantly.
You ignore most of his directives anyway.
When I believe they're against the contrary, the contrarian interests of the system, yes.
When you make up things and decide you don't like the answer.
Jim, were you able to find the email?
I'm having trouble. My, my email is not syncing up with my desktop or something because I, I know you sent it to me Saturday evening and I have nothing in my inbox that, that comes up for it. So I'm having a sync issue with my Surface here.
Friday, "Good afternoon, Mayor Miller. Please know that I am not an attorney. That said, I believe the town charter is straightforward on the question. As the charter states, the department heads serve at the pleasure of the mayor, that leaves termination decisions up to the mayor. I see nothing else in charter that counteracts that position, that provision for the town attorney. Jim Peck, research specialist, Maryland Municipal League."
Did you send him any of the other information? That's, that's all you asked is you gave him the three sentences from the charter and said, "Can I do whatever the hell I want?"
I see nothing else in charter that counteracts the provision for the town attorney. That's the thing, is the charter supersedes the code. That is the basis of government.
Yeah, when I said that we need to look at the charter and re, to fix it so that people can't come in and act like dictators, you were like, "Oh, no, you can't do that."
Can't come in and run the city how it was meant to be run. That's your problem, is the city has not been ran and then it was- No, it is an opinion. You have been operating on, "This is what we've always done," which is contrary to the charter and code.
Common courtesy and morality is contrary.
No, doing what is-
People give respect to other people.
Charter and code says is what you were supposed to do.
They're vague little sentences. All it was was a direction.
Charter and code is vague little sentences?
They're very-
Yet we expect our residents to follow this charter and code that our council can't even follow?
The residents don't have to follow it, it's for us.
Where do you think the ordinance is that they have to follow reside?
They come from the code. And that, they are very-
Wow.
I, I can't, I can't.
I can't either. Um, okay. Are we done with the subject? Is there any more questions, Councilmembers? I think we're at the, again, back at the amendment. It's up for introduction. Again, the only thing I see is the city attorney shall be removed by vote of council. That is in conflict with the charter. As required by any men, as required by any member of council creates the ability for council to act outside the bonds of, outside of the bounds as a body of council. That allows individual council members to act, act outside of the body, which is not how our charter gives you guys power. You are given power as a body, the body of council. You are not embodied as individuals. You are not executives, you are not any executive.
But you are not embodied to work on your own when it comes to decisions that cover the whole city.
That is why I ran for the chief executive officer, the mayor position of the city, and not council.
Oh, I thought you told me it was because your wife said you had to or wouldn't let you not because you already invested too much money.
Yeah, that's enough. I'm done with this conversation.
I just, I, I, I-
Anyways, um, the next is council where a member of council, same thing, creates an ability for a council member to act outside of the bounds as the body of the, as the body of the council. There, there is, the council members are not supposed to be acting as individuals outside of their body. That is not what a council member is. If you wanna put-
Your complaint is that individual council people would ask for legal, legal clarification or, or to have something explained to them in a definite way.
You talk about how I don't let the body of council know anything. Why wouldn't you want the body of council to know your legal clarification?
Nine times out of ten, it's in a group email. How are they not?
That's the body of council. The thing I'm arguing against is the individual council members looking for it.
That, it always, I would say ninety-five percent of the time goes through a group email so that that answers question, that question gets answered for everyone.
Well, that's fine, then let's take out individual council member. If, since it goes to the body anyways, that's fine. I've never argued that the body of council shouldn't receive legal representation.
Yes, you did. You told him he couldn't talk to us.
No, I did not. I said, "He is up here to represent the legal body of council." Is the same thing that I told him when he sat in that office. Because he, even then, he understood. He was like, "Well, yeah, you're right." And that he represents the legal body. He does not represent the individual council members.
He represents the city. And when I'm asking a question that is about the city, he should have the right to answer that question.
To the body of council.
Well, Mr. Mayor, the, the issue, at, at issue with that is that you are then limiting that access to twice a month.
I'm not, I'm prescribing it.
Does not necessarily allow for contemporaneous, you, you just made that-
I, I said the same thing. If the body of council, like if we wanna, if you guys wanna send it out to all council, that is the body of council, however, individual members meeting with him for, say, lunch, um, stuff like that, that is an individual meeting with him outside of the body. That is not what is permitted by the code and charter currently. Not only that, the other thing is that most, most cities, if they allow an individual council member to get that representation, they put a cap on it. If you put a cap on it, I could agree. However, let's say, for instance, every council member gets one hour. That, let's say the city attorney charges a hundred fifty dollars. That's what? A hundred, three hundred, six hundred?
Mr. Mayor, I would suggest that you not make that kind of economic argument because you are in, in favor of a large, of, of a, of a firm representing us because one of your issues is an individual attorney, um, may not be able to represent us fully because he may go on vacation. But when you move away from the council that we have, who was not charging us an excessive rate by any means and go on to a larger firm, we may find ourselves spending substantially more.
And this is our, this is the, what I talked about with other city attorneys out there, was essentially that, yeah, he charges less, but what happens is, is he has created a basis for individual council members to message him. So even though he's charging a hundred fifty dollars, he's charging seventy-five dollars for an email that council, that individual council members are sending. Or when they go out for lunch, for instance. Two-hour lunch is three hundred dollars that the people are spending. However, again, we're sitting up here making decisions where we are saying, "No, you can't have fifty dollars off a water bill, but I can have council members go out to lunch with the city attorney for three hundred dollars." That's the problem. That's the problem with individual council. That is the problem with individual members getting individual council. He is up here to represent the body of council, as per the code. As per, he actually sat up here and said, "Yeah, I don't do this for other municipalities, the actual one-on-one communications with council." You were there for the same meeting where he said that. I don't-
Because he's been here for twenty years and has loyalty to this city and wants things to go the best way they possibly can.
He has loyalty to council members.
He has loyalty to this city. And just because you don't like the loyalty to the city and you don't like that he was trying to express that things were being done in an improper manner-
Things are being done per code and charter. He actually, actually, and his, his argument was that when I sent him, "Hey, you are doing something outside of the code," his response was, "Well, yeah, that's how we've always done it and it works efficiently, in my opinion." I don't care if it works effi- efficiently in his opinion. That is him working outside of the code, the way it is prescribed for city attorney to work.
I love how you keep saying, "He said, he said," when he's not here to defend himself.
He's actually in the email. He's actually in the email. He's actually in that packet that you were just talking about, the email that he replied back to me. You, you can look in there and read it if you want. I don't know if you read your own papers that you get, but by all means. Anyways, same thing. Like I said, um, my opinion would be to put a, uh, cap on it. And then while I appreciate you guys.
So are you going to put a cap on the next lawyers too then? That's what you're saying?
Put a one hour cap on personal counsel.
I'm, I'm just checking because they charge us $300 an hour.
Yes, that is what I'm saying.
You don't get to dictate that.
I'm not. I'm suggesting.
For, second of all, the success that has been Tony Town.
The success.
Over the last number of years, and I'm going back 38 years here. I've served in city government that long. I've been a councilman. I've been mayor pro tem. I've been mayor for 12 years and certainly in the, now serving as mayor pro tem. And all during that whole time, the free flow of information between council members and the mayor and our attorney and our, and our department heads has been the reason for the success that we've had. Now, you want to roll all that back and, 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 and structure it in, in some fashion so that you can manipulate it? Well, that's not going to happen. We, we've got, we've got to prevent that at any cost. The, 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 the life of the city of Tony Town is at stake and you're endangering that right now. What, the way you are operating is endangering the city of Tony Town.
The life that you've had in the city of Tony Town, the, what you have created in Tony Town, yes, it's endangering. I am changing 30 years of what I believe has been actions that are contrary to the charter in Tony Town.
You're, you're being foolish. Yes, you are.
It's the same argument. That's how we've always done it. That's how we're going to continue to do it. That's how we've always done it.
That's not how we always done it is not the answer, but pro, real progress has been made. I've witnessed it. I've been there. I've been guiding it. And I can guarantee you the quality of life that we have in Tony Town today is as, is, is as good as it's ever been.
Well, it was.
And you're, and you're rolling that back. You're, you're, you're trying to, to create some kind of, uh,
I'm not rolling it back, that's for sure.
Regime.
There's no authoritarian regime.
That's more comfortable in Eastern Europe than it is in America.
No, the idea is to get stuff actually done instead of kicking stuff down the road for a year. Literally, the year that I came out here to the councils, watched them do whatever, more than half the items that were put up were kicked down the road.
I don't know where you're from or where you're going when you leave here. But in the meantime, try to build this town.
And I am, and wrenches are being thrown into it.
Rather than destroy it. What you're doing is destroying the town.
Destroying the, that's what, I am destroying the town.
Absolutely.
Name one thing that has destroyed the town thus far.
Well, by not involving the council in your decisions.
Okay, how does that destroy the town?
Because the decisions you make are made by one person.
How does that destroy the town?
And most of the time they're suspect.
How does that destroy the town?
It's the morality across the city. We've got people reaching out, out to us saying that they're afraid to even make posts on Facebook because they're getting threats from your followers. They have to remove their posts because people are threatening them. You're empowering that kind of behavior on social media.
I'm empowering that kind of behavior.
Yes, you are.
I have, I have people every day.
Yeah.
Who I've known for 40 years, who will come to my office, saying, what in the world can we do? How can we stop this madness? And honest to goodness, I tell them, I don't know. I don't, unless the mayor listens, unless the mayor communicates, unless the mayor cooperates with coun, council, I don't have a whole lot of hope. And that really, really tears me up.
So out of the hundreds of correspondences that I deal with every month, out of the whole six months that I've been here, I've received two negative responses thus far in my email box. So again, where you, ever you guys are hearing this, tell them feel free to reach out to me. They can reach out.
They're not going to tell you they're unhappy. They're going to tell me you're unhappy.
They're going to tell you that they're unhappy.
Because they know that you don't listen.
They don't trust you.
I, I.
You're not trustworthy.
Even today, somebody had a critique of me. I answered the phone. I talked with them.
Oh, yeah, we heard about that.
Okay.
Because she called us too.
She called you guys too? Oh, wow. That's a shock.
I liked your answer to why you fired the attorney, because you can.
No.
That was treating her with respect.
What she specifically asked me was, you don't have the authority to do that. And I told her, per the charter of Tony Town, I do. And that's the bottom line of it. I don't know what to tell you. If you, this is how the city charter is organized. This is how the code is organized. I am sorry that nobody is taking the time to read it. I am, I apologize for that. I do. I apologize for that.
Don't.
But if you want a work seminar, if you want a training class, reach out to me. I'll hold one. I will hold one for you.
What? You'll have the AI teach us?
I'll have, I'll sit there and teach it myself. I don't know what to tell you. I mean, read it. God gave you eyes. I didn't.
Don't give us anything.
Well, again, I don't work for you.
Let's move on something. Let's move on. Change in this to where we can have some more say.
As I've said, ordinance 10 dash 2023 contains parts that are inconsistent with the charter.
That's not your opinion.
That's not my opinion. Those parts would be e, I'd say borderline illegal if you put them in, but either way, you need a attorney to sign off on it. So once we get the new attorney, they can review it. So.
Well, again, Mr. Mayor.
Introduction of, introduction of ordinance. Yep, sure, Councilmember Tillman.
Again, you're, the, the charter is, is silent on the city attorney because the city attorney is not an employee.
He is an appointed position. Appointed positions fall under the termination powers of the mayor powers under, I think it's mayor powers B is where it falls under. And that's what we just went over. I just went over the email with you from the municipal, Maryland Municipal League. I have confirmation for the city attorney that I, he believes that I have that power as well. I believe I have that power. I don't know what the argument is. Not only that, there is precedence from previous mayors doing this in Tony Town. I don't know where you're getting this idea that this power isn't there. Just because it doesn't specifically speak to the removal in the code or the charter, that actually gives the power to the mayor for the appointment position. Again, basics of government.
Well, let's just consider how convenient it is.
Again, the charter is.
It's not convenient. That is how it is set up.
That we punish whistleblowers.
And not only that, punish whistleblowers? Okay. I won't even touch on that comment right now, but I'm sure people will see the irony of it in the future. Um.
Okay.
Let's, again, introduction ordinance 2023 dash 10, amendment to officers and employees section of the city code. Is there a motion?
Well, with all due respect, I feel like without an attorney, we can't.
I agree. There's a lot of legal issues in this.
We have, we have to table it.
That's another reason the attorney was fired. If you probably, probably look at the real reason, that's the real reason.
The real reason was, was because as I was looking into the city attorney, council members decided to take it upon themselves to try to strip the removal power, even though I had spoken to multiple council members, that it was in my intention to eventually remove the city attorney and I was making sure I had the authority to do it. And once that authority, once I 100% completely believed I had the authority to do it, I took the action on it. This isn't something that was just brung. This, the reason why, you even said earlier, the reason why this ordinance was put into place was because you heard I was working on it. So what you tried to do, what you tried to do was reactionary ordinance in response to the direction.
Forcing us to do that. And again, I made that change suggestion for the sake of transparency. Why wouldn't you want that discussion to happen in public? You're the one that keeps saying everything should be done at this table. Yet you run around and do whatever you want, not here at the table.
I've been very transparent about me looking into the city attorney for removal. I've talked about it multiple times on Facebook. I've talked about it multiple times.
On Facebook. On Fa, I don't follow you on Facebook.
I've talked about it multiple times with council members. I've raised my concerns.
Really not getting anywhere.
Yeah, I feel like it just needs to be tabled. End of story. We can't do anything without an attorney. So.
We can still, we can still go move forward with the introduction.
Forward with it and we can get legal counsel from M M L like you're going to do until we get an attorney.
Okay.
If we need legal, but I'd say we move ahead with it.
I'll second that.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, name? The ayes have it. It is introduced. Next up, we have adoption of resolution 2023 dash 16, water allocation for November. Questions, comments, concerns from council? Hearing none, I am looking for a motion of approval for the water allocation for November. Looking for a second?
I will second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, name? The ayes have it. Resolution 2023 dash 17, check signature authorization. Questions, comments, or concerns from council? All, looking for a motion on that?
So moved.
Looking for a second?
I will second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Next up, we have resolution 2023 dash 18, public records custodian. Looking for a motion of approval or whichever way.
I move to approve.
Looking for a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, name? The ayes have it. City manager report?
Nothing to add.
Department reports, questions, comments, concerns from council? Jim, do you have anything regarding department reports?
Just a quick update, I guess, on Roberts Mill Road, Broad Street. Um, the, the concrete subcontractor should be in tomorrow to pour the remainder of the curb and gutter. And, uh, the paving contractor will begin a base coat of blacktop on Roberts Mill Road later this week.
I wish I had some confetti that I throwed up there.
People will be glad once that's done.
Fingers crossed that the temperatures stay warm enough that the blacktop is still, um,
Yep.
viable.
Questions, comments, concerns from council? Hearing none, proceeding forward, new business, monthly financial report, questions, comments, concerns from council? Looking for a motion on that? Looking for a second?
I will second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, name? The ayes have it. Accounts payables, looking for a motion on that, or questions, comments, concerns from council? Looking for a motion on that?
Mr. Mayor, can I request that Councilmember Tillman give me a thumbs up or a thumbs down so that we, I, I can't.
Councilmember, did you hear that?
If we could do that, it's easier for me to.
Yes, I did, but, um, uh, I just was going by silence and, you know, a failure to vote is a, is a yes. And so I, I was just letting these things go. Um, but if you would like, I'd certainly happy to.
Appreciate it.
Okay, well then, you can, you can mark me as yeses for all of this.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, the council payables, did we get a motion on that? Great.
I will move to accept.
Looking for a second?
Second.
I'll second. I'll chime in.
We got Councilmember Foster with a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, name? The ayes have it. Deepwater and project change order, you need a, what do you need on that, Jim? A motion to accept the change order?
Correct.
Looking for a motion to accept the, or questions, comments, concerns from council regarding it? Hearing none, I'm looking for a motion one way or the other on the deepwater and project change order.
Are you moving to approve?
Moving to approve, I assume?
Yes.
Looking for a second on that?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, name? The ayes have it. Engineering services for fiscal year 2024, 2024 sewer rehabilitation projects. What do you need on that, Jim?
Motion to award the engineering proposal to C D M Smith.
Okay. Do we have a motion to award that?
I think we should award it to C D M Smith.
All right, yeah. Questions, comments, concerns from council?
And the dollar amount is 147 to 27.
Move to award.
Looking for a second?
I will second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, name? Carries. Comprehensive plan, upgrading, upgrade outsourcing. Um, looking for a consensus on this. Questions, comments, or concerns from council?
No concerns. Our, what, what's our, our path forward right now with that?
RFP, correct?
If, if there's consensus to move forward towards outsourcing, we'll put together a, a request for qualifications, um, send it out to some firms, do a few interviews and come back with, with, um, a, a s- small number of actual proposals, um, to do the comp plan update.
And, um.
And we'll see the.
Will this, will this be run through planning commission also?
I think it would, right? Comprehensive plan, whether or not.
We will certainly get their comments on it. Um, if we, if we do move forward, um, ultimately, the, the council will approve a, a proposal to provide the service. So, you know, it'll fall in your lap for, for approval. But certainly getting input from the, the planning commission and perhaps having the chairman of the commission be involved in interviewing for prospective firms that we solicit proposals from would, would be helpful.
They, they, and, and past comprehensive plans, we've always done these ourselves with internal committees. And this is a change. I'm not familiar with that. What brings us to this point?
Well, that is correct. However, Carroll County Planning Department used to lend basically support of the, the planning commission and usually a few other individuals that would be designated as the comprehensive planning committee, um, would meet regularly. And there was, historically, there's been county staff that would attend that and usually our liaison with the county planning office.
Yes.
And that staff person would go back and, and draft everything and come back with it the next, for the next meeting. Um, and the county is unable to provide that level of support anymore.
That explains it. Thank you.
So we've been sort of stumbling. We've, we've had a number of false starts probably since, I'll say, looking back in the zoning files, 2018, where we tried to chip away with it and look at a chapter every couple of months and we just never, you know, the commission gets busy and.
That because I thought this process was underway when I left office.
Right. And, and we, we worked with the planning commission on, you know, a handful of chapters, but then the planning commission agenda gets busy or the zoning administrator gets busy and it gets pushed off to the side and then we. And it, it just never stays on top of the pile long enough to actually get done.
Okay, that's all I needed to know.
So on that, any additional questions, comments, concerns regarding the comprehensive plan upgrade outsourcing? Hearing none, I'm looking for a consensus. If we could just get either, yeah, hands raised, something. Looks like we have majority consensus.
Okay, we'll start getting some inquiries out.
Next up, we have the ratification of purchase Tony Town Police Department Body worn camera hardware. This is primarily covered by the grant that we received, correct, Jim?
Yes, the grant was $72,374 and our, um, contract with Motorola was $81,842. So the grant covered the vast majority of it, but there will be some out of pocket. But, uh, because of the requirement in the grant to contract for the cameras within a certain amount of time, we had to, we requested the mayor to go ahead and sign it. So tonight, we're looking to ratify that agreement because it was, the window was too short to wait for the council meeting. So we're really just looking to ratify the contract with Motorola for $81,842. That's in your packet.
Is that something that has an ongoing component in terms of, um, maintenance upgrades, um?
It, it is, yes, yes.
And so is this something that'll have to be re-upped on an annual basis? Or is there an annualized?
It's a multi-year agreement. Trying to scroll down to get to it.
Yeah, what I'm asking is there an annual component that will need to be authorized every year?
I know that it's in here because I read it. I just can't find that page. There's so many pages.
Down page 102, 103.
Somewhere it says.
So there's a five-year, um, five-year subscription as part of this. So it will periodically need to be renewed.
But it covers this for the, the next five years?
Five years, yes.
Thank you. I apologize that I did not have a chance to read through that contract today.
Okay, any further comments, questions, concerns, ratification of purchase, Tony Town Police Department Body worn camera hardware? Hearing none, I am looking for a motion one way or the other.
I, I move to ratify that contract.
Looking for a second?
I will second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, name? Carries. Nomination to planning and zoning commission. We have a Mr. Garner. We talked about that on Wednesday, right? That's his, Mr. Garner.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, if I could just mention one, one more thing on the Motorola agreement, just for clarification. There are components in here that are five years, but that does not mean that we're going to be spending $81,000 every five years. That there's, there's hardware, but then there's also software and support. And that's the piece that, that will, there are upgrades that can be done. Um, but it doesn't mean that we have to go out and spend $81,000 every five years. I just wanted to clarify that.
This is something that we're being mandated. Is that correct?
Yes, we, we, yes. Body worn cameras are a state mandate.
We're actually well ahead of the mandate at this point in time, correct?
With the grant, we should be.
Yes, yes, we will, we will be compliant before the, um, the drop dead date.
Any additional comments, Jim?
No, sorry. I just wanted to clarify that.
Good. Nomination to planning and zoning commission, Mr. Garner. If I'm correct, that is his last name, Mr. Garner. Correct, Jim? I don't have my paper from last week in front of me.
Gonder.
Garner, right? Yeah.
R N E R.
Um, whenever last week he'd be filling the, whenever last week he'd be filling the, uh, vaca, vacated, uh, alternative spot. Any questions, comments, concerns regarding that? Looking for a motion one way or the other?
Motion to approve him.
Looking for a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, name? Carries. Approval of special event permit application, Wolfstock, June 2022, 2024. Um, I'm sure everybody remembers Wolfstock was a pretty good event here in Tony Town, very popular. Any questions, comments, or concerns from council regarding that? All those in fa, or, sorry, I need a motion on that.
Motion to approve the special event.
Looking for a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, name? Carries. Approval of lease agreement T-Mobile. I know this was added to the packet because we didn't have it ready for Wednesday. Um, questions, comments, or concerns from council? Hearing none, I'm looking for a motion one way or the other. Hearing none, I'm looking for a motion one way or the other.
The agreement looked good to me. I move to approve.
Looking for a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, name? Carries. Next up, we have Councilmember Reports. Start, Councilmember Tillman, you want to lead us off?
Sure, um, I did attend the, uh, Planning Commissioners Conference, um, a few weeks ago. Uh, that was a, uh, an excellent conference. It was well put together. Uh, and, uh, was glad to see that, uh, almost the entire Planning Commission, uh, attended. Uh, there was a lot of great information, uh, and some of the information regarding, uh, getting a consultant to help, uh, with our comprehensive plan came from, uh, folks that we met there and the discussions that we had. Uh, it was an excellent conference and a lot of good information, so I'm very, I was, uh, very pleased that so many of our commissioners could go. And, um, uh, I think it was, uh, an excellent, uh, excellent thing. Um, in terms of actions that we're currently working on, and I'm, uh, checking my paper here, um, we do have a, uh, site plan, um, uh, from AVAPCO, uh, for their, uh, addition, and I believe that that, this was a presentation only, so there was no, um, no approvals given at this time. Um, we did talk a good bit about the, the, uh, chicken ordinance, and I'm glad to see that our comments were, uh, incorporated into the revised ordinance. Um, a little dark in this hotel room, so I have trouble reading my paper here. Um, but, uh, th- those are the big things that were actually happening, uh, you know, in, in the, uh, uh, the current month. Um, it's actually fairly quiet on the Planning Commission front, so, uh, and so that's, that's a good thing. So that's, uh, all I have unless anyone has any questions.
Councilmember Chaney?
Okay, so I have the Tonnytown Police Department report for the month of October. There were 367, um, dispatched or generated calls for service. There were 36 total citations issued, and 85 total warnings issued. There were five total adult arrests in October, and one juvenile arrest in October. Um, good news, Senior Patrol Officer Steven Sacadalis was promoted to the rank of Master Patrol Officer, and Patrolman First Class Jared Marshall was promoted to the rank of Senior Patrol Officer. So congratulations to both of those officers for their many years of dedicated service to our town. Um, other good news, Officer Dylan Blaze has met all of his administrative requirements and has started the field training process. Um, he has received specialized training in the Tonnytown Police Lateral Officer Training Program, firearms training and qualifications, and CEW training and certification. Um, as far as community outreach in October, the police department participated in a trick-or-treating, um, festivities on Halloween night by handing out glow sticks, and that was well received. Um, there were many trick-or-treaters that were happy to have their picture taken with them, and that's a great, uh, community outreach opportunity. In addition, members of the department attended the Clothesline Project, which is a public art exhibit of t-shirts decorated by domestic violence survivors. And in honor of those lost to interpersonal violence, members also attended the Domestic Violence Lunch and Learn Event. The event was very informative, and the resources, um, that can be afforded to domestic violence victims are now known by the department and will be put to use. That's all I have.
Councilmember McCarron?
Your turn.
Um, I don't have quite a full report this month, simply because I'd like to meet with Miesh, uh, right, right before council to get the latest on what's going on, and Miesh was ill today, and I was busy too, so it worked out well for, for me, but it, I'm not sure Miesh was, he would rather been in work, I think. Uh, the big news is the, uh, Small Business Saturday, which will be on November the 25th. Uh, I think that the downtown is pretty excited about this happening. I spent some time with, uh, Paul Keun, who, uh, uh, yeah, was, was going around distributing posters to the downtown business people, and we had a nice chat, and I, I look forward to that event. I think it's gonna be, um, um, a good draw to bring people downtown and let people know who's down here and what we do, so I'm looking forward to that. I'll, um, get a complete report when I meet with Miesh later this week, and I'll save some for next month, but, uh, things are moving forward. I understand, um, well, maybe I shouldn't say so, but I think there's, there's been activity in, uh, in one of our vacant buildings down there if it's a possible tenant, so I won't, I won't say that anymore about that, because it's not a done deal yet, but it's one that we'll all be very happy with when it, when it's over, so.
Councilmember Foster?
Uh, Department of Public Works, uh, Randy has been, um, in contact with MDE and has received guidance for the next cycle of grants that start in December. So, uh, with this guidance, we're hoping to rank high enough to qualify for a grant next year. Uh, Habitat for Humanity, as everybody is probably aware, 'cause you see it, the house is coming along. They expect for the outside to be done by the end of January, and then volunteers will move to the interior and do drywall type work. But, um, I think that's an ambitious goal, but they said the end of January. And that's it. Oh, I'm sorry.
Nope, you're good.
Myself and a couple of other council members did attend the Veterans Day Ceremony that was held at the American Legion on Saturday. Um, it was a challenge getting in there, but we all made it, and it was a very nice ceremony.
All right, Parks and Rec. The photography contest ended, and the prize-winning photographs were truly fantastic. Uh, top prize went to Michelle Dessecker, Dessecker? I'm hoping I said that right. First and second prize in the action category went to Valerie Rockwood and Lisa Valentine. First and second prize in the nature category went to Destiny Halpin and Becky Mendenhall. First and second prize in the play category went to Lisa Valentine and Becky Wagner. And then there were several honorable mentions. Those can be found on the, uh, Parks and Rec Facebook page. Uh, the October 28th Tales of Tonnytown Trunk or Treat and Pumpkin Decorating Event was a success, a great turnout, lots of fun, and we thank everyone involved with making this event so fun for our community. The Christmas tree lighting will be on Saturday, December 2nd, starting at 4:30 PM with a candy cane hunt. Santa should arrive at 5:30. There will be Christmas carols, wagon rides, and food trucks. There will also be a holiday market at Thunderhead Bowl on the same day from 9 to 1, offering a wide variety of vendors for holiday shopping, so we hope the community comes out to support our local businesses. Dates have been set for all of our 2024 events, and planning has already started on some of them. The next meeting of the Tonnytown Athletic Association and the Parks and Rec Advisory Board is this Wednesday, the 15th, starting at 6:30 PM. Um, and just as an added aside, uh, Lorena is a member of the MML Engagement and Outreach Committee, and she has been commissioned to visit at least one mu- well, one municipality that isn't quite as engaged with MML as it potentially could be. So she's actually visiting two municipalities this Friday in Western Maryland, Grantsville and Mountain Lake Park. Um, they're not only on behalf of MML, but also on behalf of Tonnytown to help spread the word about all the great things going on in our community, and to hopefully share ideas with these sister municipalities. That's it.
Sounds good, um. Before adjournment, I just have a couple of, like, of last comments to make. Um, it was a contentious meeting. It's the same thing I've told everyone. It's the same thing I've told every councilperson. My door is open. Rarely, if ever, does a councilmember say, hey, I want to talk. Hey, I have this issue with what you're doing. Most of the time, they know what I'm doing, but nobody reaches out to come talk with me. And the councilmembers that do talk to me, I appreciate them. I appreciate that they actually reach out and engage with me, because that's how it should be. I shouldn't be the ones trying to manage up to their schedule. I shouldn't be the ones setting their calendars. I shouldn't be the ones making sure that they're part of the conversation. It's a two-way street, and I do appreciate the ones who have made the attempt to, to make, to bridge that gap, because I believe I work with those councilmembers when I can. However, it's the same thing. My door is always open to residents. It's always open to anybody that wants to contact me with any questions, concerns that they might have, just as anything that happened in this meeting, you are free to reach out to me. Um, same thing goes for council. And I appreciate everybody, and I appreciate the staff for what they've had to go through with it all. Yes, the direction of the town is changing. That is, it's what I ran on, was to change it. It wasn't to keep it the same. That is not what I ran on, and I believe I am ultimately fulfilling that goal. I believe I've accomplished quite the bit of the stuff that I set out to accomplish so far. And while council may feel that they're not getting anything done here, while they may feel that I'm, uh, destroying the town, as you can see, there's no valid answer to what destroying the town is for them, other than destroying egos and destroying an old system that needed to be broken down and rebuilt to something that is sustainable for all residents of the town. It's been an interesting six months, and we'll continue working at it. Councilmembers, even though we have our conflicts, I appreciate y'all. And again, phone's always open, and when you guys do call, I do answer. I believe I have a pretty open schedule to come meet with you guys whenever you want to talk, but it is a two-way street.
Mr. Mayor, I do, uh, appreciate the fact that your door has always been open, and every time that I have called or asked to meet and talk to you, you are willing to do that. And as we have discussed, I think it would go a long way to your relationship with the council, for you to be a little more open, uh, a little more ahead of providing information to council. I think that that would resolve many issues, um, that we have faced.
We'll work on it, and it's just, again, two-way street. That's all I ask, is if you have questions, comments, concerns, you reach out about them. Because I, I am not a mind reader. I don't know what you're looking for, other than the stuff.
Neither are we, sir.
I know, and that's, again, two-way street. I have, when I reach, the councilmembers I do reach out to, they normally do respond. There's a couple that haven't, and it's unfortunate, but the relationship is a two-way street. I'm not gonna be the only one trying to build it.
It's very good to hear you say that it's a two-way street. It hasn't been to this point. It's been a one-way street, and that's all we're trying to overcome. Thank you for those comments, Mayor.
Thank you. Um, looking for a motion of adjournment? Looking for a second?
I will second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Judy, I have your.